Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Le'omano Salt Lake Foster Village Airport Neighborhood Board 18. Thank you for coming out this evening. The time is 6:30 PM. Before we start our meeting, can we please stand for the Hawaiian National Anthem sung by our board member?
And all of you who went to school here in Hawaii, if you guys are on this song, sing along with me. Yeah?
Thank you, Ms. Hein. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call of board members to establish a quorum?
Thank you, Chair. Yes. Calling on James Kavika Gower. Thank you. Lorraine Godfrey.
Here.
Thank you. Nicole Hein.
Here.
Patty Igawa is not here. Myself, I'm here. Joseph Omura.
Here.
Yes. And David Yomes. We have six forming a quorum.
Can I be called David Kavika Yomes too? No? Okay. Anyway, moving on our meeting, the Honolulu Fire Department.
All right, good evening. My name is Lane Saito from Honolulu Fire Station Second Watch. I'll be delivering the Honolulu Fire Department Neighborhood Board Report for April 2025. So we'll start off with the incident statistics. For March 2025, we had zero structure fires, zero wildland brush fires, zero nuisance fires, zero cooking fires, two activated alarms, no fires, 69 medical emergencies, three motor vehicle crashes, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazmat incidents. Next, I'll give the fire safety tip. So the fire safety tip for April 2025 is evacuation planning. So ensure you have an emergency preparedness plan in place for situations like environmental emergencies, fires, or natural disasters. Familiarize yourself with at least two escape routes from your home and plan an evacuation path if you must leave your neighborhood due to an emergency. For more information, visit fire.honolulu.gov. Leave early to avoid getting trapped by fire, smoke, or traffic delays. Set up a predetermined meeting spot, like a trusted neighbor or relative's home, a low-risk area, a shelter, or evacuation center, and bring your emergency supply kit with essential items for your family and pets. That is all. Is there any questions?
Board, any questions for the Fire Department? Mr. Omora.
Yeah, I just was wondering, we're entering outside, it's raining, been windy. I was wondering, are you guys the one that explains to the community about the plans, what to do, where to go if there's like a hurricane? Because that's the biggest, I guess in our area in Salt Lake, that would be the biggest fear for the whole district would be hurricane. And, uh, or do we talk to the city on that?
Yeah, it's a great question. I believe it would be like the Department of Emergency Management.
So city?
Yeah, city. Yeah, city, DM Agency.
Okay.
Or civil defense as well.
I'll wait till the appropriate people come up. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the Fire Department? Audience, any questions for the Fire Department? Thank you, sir, for coming on.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the Honolulu Police Department are going to do something different this evening. I want the two lieutenants from, uh, one from District Five, Kalii, the other one from District Three, Pro City. I want them just to focus on electric bicycles. And we're just having so much collisions involving these electric vehicles, uh, bicycles. And then I think we just had a fatality a few days ago. So lieutenants, if you could take that over, thanks.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lieutenant Creighton Hatiko. I'm one of the nighttime commanders at the Kalii Police Station. You guys know that we recently passed, um, we had some legislation passed regarding to address the, um, the issues with electronic bicycles on the roadways. So currently, the new laws, they state you must be at least 15 years old to operate electric bike. You must, the electric bike must be registered to a household member that is at least 18 years old. Helmets with a chin strap are required for riders under 18 years old. The motor must not exceed 750 watts. And, um, for the layperson, it's hard to, to know such things, but for officers, um, the motors need to be clearly marked, um, their wattage and things like that. So those are things that we do check if we do a stop. Basically, when you see those, um, the e-bikes that look like dirt bikes, those are well above 750 watts. So they're not supposed to be, they're marked as recreational vehicles, they're not supposed to be on the roadway unless they are registered as a vehicle, like the registration you have in your car, and unless they have the correct markers, lights, and also a license plate. So I don't know if there's a plan in the works to get, um, license plates for those types of vehicles for the road. That is something to follow up with your representatives. Also, uh, for legal electronic bikes, they must have fully operable pedals, like a bicycle. And, um, they are allowed to ride on a residential sidewalk where a lane is not perfect, uh, provided for them, um, but they must follow a 10 mile per hour speed limit. They're not allowed on business district sidewalks. The wheels must face forward and remain in contact with the ground at all times. So that means no wheelies, no exhibition riding. And the operator must remain seated in a standard riding position with one leg on each side of the seat. Some safety tips for people who operate, um, electronic bicycles. Uh, we want you guys to stay visible and audible. Wear lights and bright and/or reflective clothing. Use the bell or the horn to alert others of your presence. Use the bike lanes when possible. Ride defensively and predictably because, um, you might feel like you're, uh, like you're at the same level as a vehicle, but you're not. Your, your body is basically open and you're riding on top of something. So in a, in a, if you go against a car or any kind of object, you're invariably going to lose. So it's better to ride with caution. And we also suggest you keep your bike regularly maintained, uh, specifically the tires and check the brake condition so that you're able to stop if you need to. For District Five, for my watch, we haven't conducted any, um, operations as of yet. As you guys have heard, in District Eight, on Inwai-Nai, EVA area, Pro City has also conducted operations to address it. We haven't had during my hours, a lot of, um, electric bike usage, and I'm not sure why that is. Uh, we do have a lot of mopeds and things like that, so that's the things that we address. But District Five officers are well-versed in the new laws so that, um, we can take action if, if calls are made.
So regarding District Three's enforcement efforts, between the period of March 23rd through March 29, 2025, there were 26 citations issued for electric bike type violations. Seven were for no helmets under 18, which is the new House Bill 52. One was given for wheelies prohibited, also under the new House Bill 52. E-bikes under 15 years old, so you're supposed to be 15, three were given for that. No vehicle tax, three. No license plate, two citations. No insurance card on person, one. No safety inspection, three. Driving without a valid driver's license, two. And the old law, the no helmets under 16, two were also given. And no motor, no motorcycle liability insurance, two citations. Some of the questions we had in the past is, can we cite juveniles? And the answer is yes. We usually get their parents' information, call the parents, let them know, try to have them come down. What, you know, effect can that have if they just lied to us is that we could take their bikes? You know, that's our bargaining chip, like, get your parents down here, we're going to impound the bike. And that way, at least we can make sure the parents are aware that these kids are riding around inappropriately. Otherwise, there are status offense laws, such as injurious behavior beyond the parental control, that are arrestable. So these other offenses are not arrestable, but if we feel that the child is, um, acting in an injurious way, maybe we cannot get in touch with parents, or they do have a history of continuing these types of action, we can arrest them for those types of status offenses. But otherwise, if there are any questions, we can try to answer them.
Board, any questions for the Police Department? Mr. Omora.
Okay. Yeah, I know, yeah, it's been raining, but hello.
We'll get you two microphones.
Okay. Anyway, uh, last night I was walking home, okay? And, uh, I caught the bus, got off, and I was walking up, uh, Catlin Road and got on Arizona by the Le'omano Elementary School sign, walking the sidewalk. Sidewalk's not that wide at all. And there were three, I know at least two of those guys were motor, like, electric bikes. The first guy was this huge guy, and the bike was pretty huge, and he took the whole sidewalk. I had to jump off the sidewalk, okay? The second person was riding up as soon as, when he came, like, was a little bit far behind. He came up and then he just jumped off the sidewalk and there was another car coming. And I was like, I'll get, you know, I was trying to tell him, I'll walk this way because I can see the cars, but he just jumped before I did. So I just told him, thanks. And the other car coming up, good thing there's no car coming down, so that car coming up could go into the other lane and bypass the biker. There was a third one that just was on the road, period, and I think that was a regular bike because the way he was struggling. And I was looking at that and I was like, what can I as a civilian do if I see something like that?
Kind of what you did, just make sure you're safe, you know? Oh, yeah, try to get out of the way. And hopefully, they're not riding, I don't know how fast were they riding, you think?
The first guy was going pretty fast. I mean, he was just whipping it, so I was like, and it's, it's dark over the kid, there's no lights on that area. So, uh, that was a surprise. I, it was, because I was kind of daydreaming with my headset on and, you know, flying down the road as I'm walking. So this is the first time I've experienced something like this, but it just made me think about this kind of stuff. Do we call you guys or we just coast it for now and just?
You could. If it's hazardous, like he's riding at a speed, in the law, it says 10 miles an hour in the, on the sidewalk, you could call. Just give a description of the person, the rider. Hopefully, we can catch up to it and hopefully they stop.
Now, see, that's the other thing too, is I didn't call in because my thinking was, by the time I call it in, these guys are gone and, and, and it's just like wasting your time, so I didn't want to do that.
It's up to you, especially, I'm glad nobody got hurt. So that's the main, main thing.
Board, any more questions for the Police Department? Mr. Gower.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just have a comment on the e-bikes in general. Um, I knew a kid actually who was associated with the, uh, the big event that happened in Ever Beach, that big rally, whatnot. And he's a good kid, he just got caught up with the wrong crowd, and he knew that once they started getting all riled up, uh, he was with the wrong crowd. So he removed himself from the situation, which is the right thing to do, and I applaud him on that. But, um, you know, this thing's not going to go away, so I think, um, there's got to be a model, you know, promote a model, a good model of this. And one, one group I can, I know of is Alamoana. Uh, they got the adults, the parents with the kids, they actually ride on Tuesday nights or so. And it's really neat because they have like Christmas lights and they have all these lights on their bikes and they're, you know, they're following all the laws, so, um, if anyway, we can promote, you know, safe, legal riding, that'd be great. Yeah.
Totally agree. And that's what we kind of promote, that it starts in the, the household, right? The parents monitoring the kids, but thank you.
Audience, any questions for the Police Department? Lieutenants, um, the helmet, you have to wear the chin strap, correct?
Yes.
Is the helmets, um, needs to be approved by the state of Hawaii similar to the motorcycles?
I think we, we don't necessarily track if it's DOT approved, like, you know, how the helmets normally have the stamp, but they recommend that they do have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate you guys coming on. Okay, moving on on our agenda, Neighborhood Board 18, Community Warrior of the Month. We've been having this, uh, every month, um, recognizing the movers and shakers of our community. And, uh, this month was our board member Patty Igawa. She had a prior commitment on the Neighbor Island, so she couldn't make this meeting, but we'll give her the, her certificate at our next meeting. But I just want to, uh, read to you the write-up that we did for her. The Le'omano Salt Lake Foster Village Airport Neighborhood Board 18 wishes to recognize Patty Igawa for her years of volunteer, the volunteerism within the community. Your dedication and partnership in the community speaks volumes of your commitment to serving others. This year, she has reached a 40-year milestone as being a valued member of this Neighborhood Board. She has been a champion of our people, especially our Kapuna and Native Hawaiians for all of these years. This feisty 86-year-old Kapuna has been a wealth of information for other board members to learn from, especially on prior issues before us. She has worked in state governor under Governor Burns administration, also worked at Kauai Hall Church for many years. This board takes great pleasure in presenting Patty Igawa with the Neighborhood Board 18 Warrior of the Month Award Certificate for April 2025. And hopefully, she's at our next meeting and we can present it to her in person. And moving on on our agenda, community updates. I moved the community updates to the beginning because the last meeting, we went way over time and they had to wait a long period of time. So I put them up front so they can go home early tonight. So let's start with Aloha Stadium.
Mahalo, Chair Yomes, members of the board and members of the community. I'm Chris Kinimaka, Special Projects Manager for the Department of Accounting and General Services. I'm joined by our interim stadium manager, Chris Sarayasu. Our big news is that we did, as you saw in the paper, cross another milestone with execution of a pre-development agreement. So what that does is it allows Aloha-Halava District partners to go full bore on their due diligence. So starting next week, you'll probably start seeing them out in the field, doing their soils testing, environmental testing, and even looking at the existing structure, getting ready to do designs for the stadium, doing their master plan, and also getting ready for the demolition, targeting end of summer for that to start. Outside of the specific contract, we also are in this, two-thirds done with the legislative session. Today was for the second crossover, so that means all the bills are, are going to survive and going to committee had to be in today, except for budget bills. But the second handout we gave today, in addition to our newsletter, is a list of our current legislative bills. And the side that has House Bill 300, House Bill 1494, and Senate Bill 1589 is a side that is the focus for NAESID and the State of Authority. The first one is the budget bill. What that does for the State of Authority is really we're looking for them to raise the spending ceiling on their special fund. We were appropriated $49.5 million for the project, but with a small ceiling, we can't spend it. So that's what we're looking for, is permission to expend those funds at $49.5 million. That allowance also has been included in House Bill 1494, which was gutted and actually looks very much like Senate Bill 1589. So other bills are tied together in that respect. Senate Bill 1589 and now House Bill 1494 also has language that enables the State of Authority to receive donations from the private sector into their special fund, designates expenditure of those funds specific to stadium construction and stadium-related infrastructure. So all good news for those, and we'll be watching those bills. Last bill on the first page is House Bill 1007, although it's titled Hawaii Community Development Authority, it is also another beneficial bill for our project in that it allows HCA to supplement funding for infrastructure in TOT districts. Stadium District is one of those districts that can benefit. It also allows them to issue revenue bonds and we get alternative ones for financing. So that's one we're watching. All of these have passed both houses, and so they're going to committee for discussion. The backside are some of the lesser bills relating to naming rights, also passed through the House. Senate disagreed with what the House did. Basically, the House limited naming rights only to the convention center and the State of Authority. Senate wants that right to be open to all state facilities. The final one is Senate Bill 891, that was trying to form a gaming working group. As I understand the legislature, it was not scheduled for the third committee, and that's a fines, so that will be dead, or at least deferred until next year. And with that, I'll go ahead and let Chris take the updates for Aloha Stadium.
Thanks, Chris. And so, um, not a ton going on at the stadium. We do have a gun buyback on the 12th, April 12th, this weekend, from 9:00 to 3:00 PM at the Aloha-Halava Lot. And then we are partnering with the food bank and swap meat, and so accepting donations from the bank as they put it through. So asking for people to donate there. So, um, the swap meat relocation to the Upper Halava Lot, contracted work by MEI contractors continue, and they're scheduled to finish in June. For us, as the demolition, the stadium is projected to start in March. Thank you.
Board, any questions for the stadium? Audience, any questions for the stadium? I have one. You guys having any events this summer for the kids, so keep them busy? Anything on your lower lot?
Nothing planned because I think the lower lot's going to be used for the swap meat parking and application of the, of the upper, so nothing planned right now.
I kind of like games, just an idea I'm throwing out. VK Fernandez during the summer months can come, maybe Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and play games and prizes, dolls, and food groups without any rides. That might be an idea to, to draw the kids on, to keep them busy during the summer, something to look at. I don't know if you'd have a vendor that really wants to do something like that, but...
Thank you.
Anyway, one of my bright ideas. The military, let's start with the Army. And just the Army and Navy get to go home early tonight.
Good evening, Chair Yomes, board members. Lieutenant Colonel Pratt, Deputy Brigade Commander for 516 Theater Signal Brigade, and your Army representative to this Neighborhood Board. For the Army tonight, not anything in particular that will be going over. There is a hiring event. I will send out the information on the hiring event. It's on the 22nd. It's going to be at AMR, and it will go all day. They'll be hiring for food service, also for child development services, and various other on-post, um, jobs that are available also through the Army Garrison. With that, I'll open it up to any of you all, if you have questions of me or for the audience.
Board, any questions for the Army? Audience, any questions for the Army? Thank you for coming out. You got it easy tonight. United States Navy.
Hello, Chair Yomes and board members. Chuck Anthony from Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. Got a few items I'd like to go over. Last month, the Navy Closure Task Force, uh, excuse me, just Navy in general, it's actually a NAVFAC, sorry about that, uh, put out a draft environmental assessment for a Red Hill water treatment facility. And so the deadline's coming up for public comments. That deadline is April 20th. The Navy submitted the public notice of availability for that draft environmental assessment to construct and operate a new water treatment facility to reconnect water from the Navy's Red Hill Shaft back to the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam drinking water The proposed action would include construction of a new permanent water treatment facility and the associated utilities, infrastructure, and site improvements, as well as the connection of an interim modified granular activated carbon, we call it MGACS for short, water treatment facility that is currently under installation at the Red Hill. So, uh, if anybody wants to take a look at the document, it's online. You can either Google it for NAVFAC and Red Hill Water Treatment Facility Environmental Assessment, or you could go to the IA Public Library in the state, uh, public library I'd also like to let everybody know, I mentioned it last month, but the next Restoration Advisory Board Meeting, RAB for short, it's going to be held next week, Wednesday, 16 April, that's at 6:00 PM at the Oahu Veteran Center. The RABs are designed to keep the community informed about restoration and other environmental issues. Wanted to also call attention, hopefully, nobody's heard any increased aircraft jet noise, but the Hawaii, maybe one, maybe one person, the Hawaii Air National Guard is hosting another exercise called Sentry Aloha, started this past Tuesday and goes until the 17th next week. Basically, what it is, it's an opportunity for mainland units to come in and exercise, mostly fighter training in, uh, probably one of the largest unrestricted airspaces on the entire planet. So, sorry if you see an increase in noise there, but it's going to be, yes, it's going to be ending next week. The other item that I wanted to just close with before we open it up to questions is, today, we finished up nine days of our annual hurricane exercise. Normally, we do it for about a week. This time around, we did it for nine full days. It's all about getting ready for, you know, hurricane season, which starts one June. And just putting on my emergency management hat, um, you know, one of the takeaways is everybody, every family should have a two-week supply of food and water, uh, just in case we do get hit by a hurricane. And, um, you know, if the ports are closed because of damage, it's going to take some time for any kind of container ships to come back from Los, the Port of Los Angeles and help to resupply us. So I don't want to go on too long, but, you know, a lot of folks, they can't afford to just have two-week supply of food and water sitting around. And that's why one of the things that we suggest is to people is, folks have just a rotating stock of canned food, or, you know, sometimes you can get pouches that last a very long time, they don't need refrigeration, and you can just tear it open and eat, eat the food that's in the pouch. That way, you'll always constantly have a supply of food on hand. And then even water, you don't have to have cases of water, you know, on hand all the time. And if, uh, you know, a hurricane's coming, everybody's going to go rushing off to the stores and get cases of water. What you can do is just have empty jugs that you keep in a cabinet or a garage or something like that and fill them up as, you know, a hurricane is approaching. Anyway, just some ideas, some food for thought. And with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions, if there are any.
Board, any questions? Mr. Omora?
Okay. Yeah, I did, you mentioned those jets and stuff, so, uh, how long are they going to be here? Every day, right?
They'll be flying every day between now and the 17th next week.
Okay. And it's mostly in the morning, right? Because I went, I had a meeting this morning on my Zoom and I could hear the jets right about 10-ish or so, somewhere between 10, 11. And, uh, yesterday, I went jogging right by the golf course, and right when I hit the golf course, the Navy golf course, the jets, there were like three sets of fours that just went flying over, and boy, that was deafening, so I was kind of wondering. So I went, huh? Huh?
Yes. Yes. Thank you for your comments. I'll note and let the folks know that we had some feedback this evening.
Mr. Gaur?
Thank you, Chair. Going back to the water treatment facility, where's all the current tainted water, untreated water being stored?
Well, it's not untreated. So, there's water that's coming out of the Red Hill Shaft now. It's put through a granulated activated charcoal or GACS system already, and it's being discharged into a lava stream.
Okay, so my understanding is the well's already open, and it's going to, they're going to take that discharge, and they're going to send it through this new treatment facility, and they're going to reintroduce it into the Navy's water drinking water supply?
That's correct. Instead of, the proposal is, instead of discharging it into a lava stream, to put it back into the drinking water system.
Thank you.
Yep.
Audience, any questions for the Navy? Thank you, Chair.
Good evening, Chair Yom's, board members, community members. Joanna Delfin from Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. So, just a few updates from the task force. Last week, we completed de-gassing operations at Tank III and started de-gassing operations at Tank IV. All of the air quality monitoring stations in and around Red Hill are operational, so there are hourly updates available on the mobile app and daily updates available on the website. Since the last board meeting, we launched a new newsletter that is shared with the public called Red Hill Highlights. We launched our third edition earlier this week. If you're interested in finding it, I actually brought copies, and they're at the front of the room, but you can also find them on the website and the app as well. So, we publish that every Tuesday. Some upcoming events that we have in a couple of weeks, targeting probably April 29th, we will host a webinar focused on the Navy IA Halava Shaft reactivation plan, and we're looking at hosting the next public open house in May. Some events that we recently attended include the Onizuka STEM Day of Exploration last week, Saturday, at the University of Hawaii West Oahu Campus. We attended the, and we attended the Department of Health's Fuel Tank Advisory Committee meeting yesterday. I do, I am, I wrote here that there was a question from the last board meeting that I wanted to provide a response to regarding disposal of the washwater produced from pressure washing operations. So, that water actually is, it does stay on island. Once it's tested and treated, it's sent to a disposal facility, a DOH permitted disposal facility of Ancapole, and they're permitted by DOH to treat and dispose or reuse of that water. That's all the updates I have pending any questions.
Board, any questions? Mr. Gaur?
Thank you, Chair. I was at, oh, I guess most of this board was invited to a meeting on O'Lelo, discussing the Navy Closure Task Force and the environmental impact statement. And I guess the board members on that meeting or committee, they were expecting a Navy representative, but they did not show up to that particular meeting. Do you know why that is?
I'm not familiar. Which environmental impact statement are you referring to? Because right now, we don't have any active environmental impact statements. There is currently the draft environmental assessment that Chuck spoke about regarding the Red Hill Water Treatment Facility proposed project.
I'm sorry, it's not an EIS. It was a memo dated back in February or so about reopening the shaft. And yeah, that was it. It was about reopening the shaft, and they were concerned about that information not being pushed out as the date, that when that memo came out, which is back in February or so. And they've only, they're claiming that they only heard about it recently, like late March, and they didn't have time to comment on that, but...
Is this, are you referring to the Navy IA Halava Shaft or the Red Hill Shaft? Because there's two, yeah, it's two different, it's two, they're two separate reactivation projects.
It's one of the two. I can't confirm right now.
So, I can tell you that in February, Department of Health did issue a conditional letter of approval to the Navy to reactivate the Navy IA Halava Shaft. So, that currently isn't undergoing an environmental impact statement nor an environmental assessment. Under the NIPA process, what was conducted was a cat X, which is a categorical exclusion, and that's because the Navy IA Halava Shaft will be operating, it's a, I want to say like, it's a temporary, it's a temporary reactivation. The Navy has to undergo a pilot study before we can fully reactivate the shaft.
Audience, any questions? Thank you for coming on.
Thank you.
Border Water Supply?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy Anos, and I'll be representing Border Water Supply tonight. I'm going to start with the main break report from last month. There were four main breaks last month. The first was on March 3rd. That was an eight-inch diameter pipe at 1587 Lahia Street, and the installed year was 1966. The second was also on March 3rd, another eight-inch diameter pipe at 4362 Punih Street, and that installed year was 1965. The third was March 15th, eight-inch diameter pipe at 958 Ala Kapua Street, and install year 1966. And the final one occurred on the 28th. It was a 12-inch diameter pipe at 3365 North Nimitz Highway, and that installed year was also 1965. So, I'll move on to the general water announcement. I passed out a flyer concerning the Detect a Leak Week event, and there's also more flyers in the back if people want. Chase down and repair those pesky leaks during the annual Detect a Leak Week campaign from Sunday, April 13th through Saturday, April 19th, 2025. Join the Border Water Supply and Hardware Hawaii at two special events to learn how to fix and repair leaks. The first is the kickoff event from, or on Saturday, April 13th, at Pearl Ridge Center near Macy's, from 11:00 a.m. to 11, or 1:30 p.m. And the second is the closing event on Friday, April 19th, at Kahala Mall, the Central Court, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Stop by for hands-on leak detection tips, toilet leak detection dye tablets, interactive activities, and swag, plus a chance to win prizes. Let's work together to make every drop count. More at www.bordofwatersupply.com/dalw. So, that stands for Detect a Leak Week. So, the second general water announcement I have is concerning this small card, and there's more of these cards too in the back if people want. This is about the city launching HNL Alert for emergency notifications. So, the city and county of Honolulu has launched HNL Alert, a new mass notification system that provides residents and visitors information about severe weather, emergencies, and other situations affecting city services via text, push notifications, or email. HNL Alerts replaces the city's current hnl.info notification system. So, there's two ways to sign up. The first is customize alerts. You can create an account at hnlalert.gov and select preferred topics to receive notifications via text, email, or push notifications from the app. And the second way is urgent alerts only. You can text HNL Alert to 888-7777 for critical safety alerts by text, and no registration is needed. Get more information at honolulu.gov/dm. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Board, any questions for the Border Water Supply? Mr. Gaur?
One, one, two questions unless Joe over there wants to butt in. Yes, thank you, Chair. Jimmy, you said, there's about four main breaks in from the '60s. Is Border Water Supply have like a tracker that's expecting when certain lines are going to break soon, and they have like hotspot areas that they're just, they're ready to send crews out in case a main breaks? Because that seems like a pattern in the '60s, and so that's my first.
I don't know if we have like a tracker to predict where mains are going to break. I know we, of course, we keep track of the install years of pipes, but that's something I can, I can look into, check with the right team that we have, or if we have some kind of tracker for predicting main breaks.
Mr. Moore?
Mr. Gaur, I'll let you go first. Anyway. So, you were talking, I guess, a couple of months ago about the Border Water Supply having that inter-island where you folks are going to be changing all of the pipes, right? Is our district going to be one of the last ones? Because it seems you guys are going to the North Shore, and we're like the opposite siding. Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
No, no.
I'm not sure how or which areas are prioritized, but I can, I can look into that too.
It's not going to be like you're going to go around step by step around the island until you circle back? You rank districts then according to what you guys?
That, I'm not sure. I have to take a look at it.
Yeah, what is the criteria?
Okay. Yeah, I'll take that question back and follow up with the right team to see what, what's the criteria for the prioritizing which lines get replaced?
Board, any questions for the Border Water Supply? Thank you for coming on.
I think there's another one.
Before we get to Mr. Gaur, this is our second round. Anybody else before Mr. Gaur wants to say anything with the Border Water Supply? Going into the second round, Mr. Gaur?
Thank you, Chair. HNL Alerts, is water breaks a part of the alerts?
Yeah, so, that's, at least from Border Waters' point of view, with that, you can check where there's main breaks or, yeah, where there's, okay.
Just to add to that, I do have that on my phone, and it works perfect. Like, just today, they had two announcements about Kailua, or yesterday, you know, so, no matter where you are on the island, the alerts come to your phone. So, it's a good system.
Nice.
Okay, I think you're done with questions. Thank you for coming on.
Thank you, everyone.
Put back my glasses on. I think I missed something. Community events, updates, and concerns. Board, you guys have any events, updates, and concerns you want to bring up? I have one, but I'll wait till then. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I was wondering if there are any announcements to be made, because this is Easter month, and there are like store events at the shopping centers, school events, et cetera, so I was just wondering.
Happy Easter. I have no, usually the shopping center has an Easter egg hunt for the kids. I'm not sure, I don't, didn't see any signs put up. Maybe they did, but I missed it. Are we having Easter egg hunt at your house, Joe? No?
No, not this year. Ran out, too expensive to eat.
Okay. I have one update, oh, not update. I received a letter from one of these companies that they're having an event at Moanolo Gardens on May 24th called Whiskey and Cigar Event, which they use the name Smoked. But anyway, I was curious and to see what this was about and what kind of permitting process they went through. Anyway, I called this company, and they said they're going to have an event on May 24th, Saturday, at Moanolo Gardens. The public can purchase tickets to this event. One of the organizers said that they capped the attendance to 200 persons for this event, and the event will be held closest to the freeway side of the gardens. They had the owner from Moanolo Gardens, JP Damon, approved for them to have this event. They said they were having no acoustic music. I informed them to notify the Moanolo Gardens Community Association, and that was the first they heard of that association. So, I put them in contact because it's concerning for that community. They had some issues with a prior event, and technically, they don't fall under our venue jurisdiction, but we hear, under events and concerns, we hear from anybody, if they have something they want to bring, this is a people's house, so under events and concerns, they can bring up anything, just that we cannot vote on certain issues if it's not part of our jurisdiction. But anyway, that was sent to, well, I talked to the female, and she said that she would notify the Moanolo Gardens Community Association. I guess the city liquor commission sent, instructed them to send a letter to this neighborhood board to inform us of the event. And that's it for that. One other event that I want the secretary to cover is our Salt Lake Waterway. We had an event in March, just wanted to cover that briefly, just see how it went, and also when our next event will be for the waterway.
Thank you, Chair. If I can reiterate what we had for March, March 8th, we did a Genki Ball making, as well as, and Chuck Anthony and Lieutenant Colonel Pratt, thank you very much for all your laborious work efforts in helping to clean the waterway area. It was quite a task, and I know it rained down on you folks as well, and everybody got soaking wet, but it was a very successful event where we cleaned up all of that waterway area. And so, please visit the Howard Shima Lekini Street Park, because it is now, you can actually see the waterway. Before, it was just covered with trees that you couldn't see beyond the fence. Now, you can just stand at the fence and actually look down at the water. And so, we did throw some Genki Balls on the 22nd, March 22nd. We threw 1,000 Genki Balls into the water, and I don't have any results of the water testing, but it's proving to be working because the water is clear. We can see fish all coming back, which is a really positive sign. I don't know if you want to fish for those fish, but, you know, it is beyond in the city's property, but it is a real positive, and we had about almost 80 people participating in that one. Our next event will be actually in July, and we're actually thinking of asking our partners, our military partners also, to please, you know, join us in this event, because it'll be at the Salt Lake District Park. And we, a small committee of us, we met with the Department of Parks and Rec, and we're trying to determine, you know, the exact area of, you know, the location of where we're going to be cleaning. We haven't set the exact date as of yet, but it will be in July, approximately July 12th. It's a Saturday. If we can do it, we might have to take a look at it, and we're looking to see if we can solicit the AMR, because it is, the property is right adjacent to that Salt Lake District Park. So, we're looking to clean that area also, and we're looking to do Genki Balls again. I will give the flyers out by the next meeting, yes, once we get everything all confirmed. Okay? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I swam in there yesterday, and the city officials made me leave. They said I was trespassing, so, anyway. Any other events, concerns, board, other than that, the audience, any events and concerns you want to bring up at this time? And moving on our agenda, Mayor Rick Blangiardi's office, Representative Brian could not make the meeting this evening, and I'll read the report that he sent to me. The highlights from the mayor's newsletter, Mayor Blangiardi's town hall... The highlights from the mayor's newsletter, Mayor Blangiardi's town hall meetings across Oahu returns for the third year in a row. The Neo Blaisdell Center Council Hall reopens after back of house renovations. The Department of Parks and Recreation begins an annual push to hire staff for the city's summer fund program. The city commemorates Hokulea's 50th anniversary at Kualoa Regional Park. Honolulu Charter Commission members are sworn in for the senior review of the city charter. A briefing on how residents can download H and L Alert, the city's new alert system for natural disasters and emergency situations. If you wanna learn more of what, uh, these highlights that I mentioned, you can go to the mayor's newsletter, which is online. Some of the follow-up issues that the mayor's representative, um, sent to us. One was Salt Lake District Park burglaries, burglaries. I, I mentioned the last meeting. He says Chair Yooms noted that there were seven break-ins at the gym building and adjoining offices. Chair Yooms asked if it is standard practice for the city parks and recreation not to have cameras at the parks. The Department of Parks and Recreation responds, currently, security cameras are not standard in city parks due to the need for coordination across multiple departments and consultation with labor unions regarding installation and monitoring. However, the Department of Parks and Recreation is actively exploring the feasibility of installing surveillance cameras in high-risk areas of Salt Lake District Park. In the meantime, DPR will review and enhance existing park security measures. This effort includes securing all building access points, submitting requests to improve lighting in key areas and possibly increasing staff presence during hours when the facilities are most vulnerable. Ensuring the safety of the park facilities and the surrounding community remains a top priority. DPR remains committed to working closely with city officials, the Honolulu Police Department and local residents to address these ongoing concerns. ENV sewer fee community meetings, Secretary Connie Morrow expressed her disappointment that ENV held a town hall meeting to introduce the proposed sewer fee increases in the district at the same night as the Salt Lake Neighborhood Board meeting in March. A response from Department of Environmental Services, we apologize for the scheduled oversight and for any inconvenience it may have caused. ENV will be present at the April 10th neighborhood meeting should there be any questions and they are present this evening. Moving on to the agenda, councilman. Who's you gonna ask the question to?
To you.
To me? Okay, I'll be the city, I'll be the mayor. Go ahead.
Can you ask them to give a report for the updates of the Ala Ilima Ala Lilikoi, the most dangerous corner thing? And the updates of what's going on with that? And also can you ask them if they're gonna paint the crosswalk? I looked at the crosswalk. The crosswalks are pretty good except on that dangerous area, right? On the most dangerous part, you can't see any crosswalk, but the rest of it seems pretty visible. The second thing was, I haven't heard anything on the updates for the Salt Lake Boulevard widening. If, can do a report, haven't heard a report on that since last year. So I was wondering if, uh, they could do an update on that. I'm hearing several different stories running wild, so thanks.
That's too many requests for me, so I'll have the Zoidel give you a form to fill out so we can send it to the mayor. Council member, council member Cordero, you are up. She might have some answers for you, Mr. O'Moore.
All right. Good evening, neighbors. Aloha, this is Radien Cordero, your neighbor from literally in Salt Lake. Uh, it's great to be here at my neighborhood board. Thank you very much for representing me as well. I do have updates, so I'm going to go off the cuff here. Ala Lilikoi, Ala Ilima, you'll see in my report. We do have an update. We received it maybe a month ago about, um, a, it's right in front of you and I also made to make sure that we emailed it, um, thanks to Board Member Godfrey to the request back a year and a half ago to send it to the board, um, at least more than 24 hours before the neighborhood board. So you can see my report there. Okay? Yeah, all right. And so if you have information about that, Ala Lilikoi, Ala Ilima, and I'm sorry, I got that information after the neighborhood board. So we put it in here, uh, for this neighborhood board report. As for the crosswalk, uh, Board Member O'Moore, can you please let me know which crosswalk you're talking about? Okay? All right. Okay, so you wanna repaint or re-stripe that particular crosswalk? Okay, got it. Noted. And, um,
Excuse me. That was brought up twice on this neighborhood board as far as that crosswalk is concerned.
Yes.
And that's the least they can start doing, the city can do is redo that crosswalk. Understand recently they said they're gonna do a left turn arrow after we went to the media and did all this thing and six years later, they finally agreed that there should be a left turn signal. But I'm concerned with that crosswalk because it's faded. In fact, on the, on the Coco Head side of Ala Lilikoi Street that's small where, where cars make the right turn onto Ala Ilima, going in the Coco Head direction, there's no crosswalk. It's just completely gone. So that needs to be addressed.
Okay, thank you for bringing it up to me this time. Thank you. All right. Uh, so next up was your request about? Salt Lake Boulevard widening. Uh, so the phase that they are going through right now, they're working with the State Department of Education to come up because they have the Makai side that is owned by the State Department of Education that they're, uh, based off of Ala, Alaia Manu Middle School that they are, uh, working with. They just had a meeting about maybe two and a half weeks ago with the Department of Design and Construction. Right now, uh, the contractor of the design and construction, Department of Design and Construction was working on the More Eva side until, um, they got up to the part where it is the State Department of Education's side. So hopefully they are able to resolve that issue, um, and they get access so that they can continue the rest of that last phase. So that's for the Salt Lake Boulevard widening project. I do think it is worth, worthwhile to get the neighborhood assistant to get the, either the Department of Design and Construction or the contractor out here so they could give further information. Because I'm just reporting it as it was reported back to me as I do from all the other city administration agencies. Okay, uh, next up, um, back to my report. Um, so H and L alerts was already highlighted. Do wanna note that some people don't like signing up and making an account. So if you don't like do that, uh, you can just text a phone number at 888-777, so you don't have to sign up and put all your name and make an account and things like that. Cause I know oftentimes people don't wanna share their information and I know that's a major concern. Next, I do wanna highlight on April 19th, there's a Pearl Harbor Bike Path cleanup along with the stormwater, with the Department of Facility Maintenance. And so if you wanna participate, there's different sites that you can go to. The site that, uh, my office and normally partners with the Rotary Club, uh, is, is right by the Best Buy and, uh, in IAA, which is also still part of my district. Um, but there are many different sites all along the Pearl Harbor Bike Path. And so if you are interested, please email Kyle Tokuda. Uh, his email is on here, but it's really small. It's kyle.tokuda@honolulu.gov. Also with stormwater, um, two weeks ago, uh, actually the same day that we threw the Genki Balls. Earlier in that day, we honored the Salt Lake Neighborhood Board represented by Secretary Shandra, uh, Connie Morrow as well as Neighborhood Board Member Doug Fujikura, um, for being stormwater heroes. Uh, so District 7, my council district was very well represented, uh, but, um, at the Stormwater Heroes Awards Ceremony. Uh, we had a few Rotary Clubs, Lions Club, as well as military represented and, um, highlighted as stormwater heroes. So huge congratulations. I was able to give, um, both Shandra and Doug certificates at the, at the ceremony as well. And so thanks to them as, and, um, for representing the community and Salt Lake Neighborhood Board well. Next up, uh, we do have two workshops. Um, they're, uh, held by the city administration's Office of Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. Uh, they're community workshops for the Climate Action Plan. Uh, the Climate Action Plan workshops, the first two are actually, are gonna be in District 7 like I mentioned. The first one is in IAA, at IAA District, IAA Public Library, um, this Friday. And it's Friday beginning at 5:30 PM and as well as April 15th, uh, in Kalihie at the Kalihie Palama Public Library. And that starts at 6 o'clock. I can't find it here. Oh, yes, here we are. Okay, so, um, this, uh, will basically update the Climate Action Plan to identify actions and strategies that reduce Oahu's, uh, carbon emissions while helping residents and businesses save costs. So once again, the first one, uh, is in IAA this Friday, uh, April 11th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM in IAA Public Library. The next one is April 15th, 2025, 6 to 8 PM at Kalihie Palama Public Library. So we hope that you'll be able to attend. The workshop will feature a climate change overview, a review of proposed actions for the updated plan and interactive sessions for feedback as well as refreshments. And so for more information, uh, please go to the link that I have highlighted in my report. Next up, um, I know that summer fund was highlighted and I know that summer fund was something that this neighborhood board wanted to, um, support. And so after that kept coming up the last few, uh, years, I talked to them. They're like, just please send us people to work during summer fund. So if you know anyone who is seeking employment, whether, whether they can be a junior leader, they're younger or if you're retired and would like to come back and work for a bit, they, they have the money. They just need people to work. The more people that they have, the more staff that they have, the more cakey that they will be able to accommodate. So, um, just wanna let you all know that. Uh, next up, uh, following up on the cameras at Salt Lake District Park, I'm, uh, thank you to Chair Yooms for giving that update from the mayor's office. Uh, in addition to that, we do have, uh, we did put in money for our budget, our budget amendments for cameras at Salt Lake District Park specifically. And, uh, we were talking to the Department of Parks and Recreation and they did share with us a little bit about, um, how they have, uh, how they don't currently have, uh, cameras there. Um, but another thing that they want assistance with is having that data backup to review if and when they do get the cameras up. So, uh, my team and I will talk with our, the new director of the Department of Information Technology to see if it's something that, not just for our district park, but for other parks across Oahu. So, um, hopefully we can do that and of course a priority with Salt Lake District Park, which I prioritize in, uh, my amendments. And hopefully the budget chair, uh, accepts it, uh, as we go through this process. With that, I'm here for any questions, um, and yeah, any questions for follow-ups?
Board, any questions? Audience, any questions for the council member? Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Governor Green's office. Senator Wakai's office. None. Linda Ichiyama's office.
Call my chair. I got up too fast. Uh, good evening. Aloha folks. Shanda Delas Reyes for Representative Linda Ichiyama. As was mentioned earlier, we are almost finished with the legislative session. Today is not only the deadline for second crossover, but also the disagreement deadline. So any, I, I'm just repeating this for folks who will watch us later. I know you folks are familiar with the process. But for the deadline disagreement, um, or did, excuse me, disagreement deadline, for, uh, the originating chamber will disagree to any changes meeting, uh, made to bills, uh, by the non-originating chamber. Call my, I'm all over the place. Um, so any House bills with Senate drafts are being disagreed on. This happens as a blanket statement, for all House bills, vice versa, with the Senate chamber. Uh, you folks should have our mid-session newsletter in front of you. Inside, you'll find a host of, uh, different bills relating to the House leadership's priorities for this session. I don't wanna take too much time going through every single bill, but as of today, just FYI, most of these bills will be moving on to conference committee, which is right around the corner next week. For the exception of HB 807, HB 503, HB 683 and HB 199. Just as a note, HB 199 was relating to public safety. This bill was directly introduced in response to complaints from neighbors around Makalapa Community Center. But SB 602, which Senator Wakai was kind enough to, or to introduce, um, has been used as the vehicle. So properties owned by HPHA, the Hawaii Public Housing Authority, will require signage. And this is to mitigate, um, a lot of the loitering we've been experiencing lately, some of that violent activity. Representative Ichiyama has also been in contact with HPHA to, um, repave, uh, some of the vehicle stalls and input, install a chain to mitigate after hour loitering. HPHA is also looking into installing a cattle gate to further mitigate any of that activity. Call my, all over the place the beginning of this report, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Board, any questions for Representative Ichiyama's office?
Oh, the battery.
You have a question? Board Member Godfrey, you have a question?
No.
Representative, yeah, she sent me that, so I just thought you might be speaking about it, but there you go.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Godfrey. Um, so, uh, apologies, this, uh, newsletter was dedicated to bills, so we didn't do our usual events, but thank you. Just as a gentle reminder, there is another battery bill event. This is dedicated to Pearl Harbor Elementary fundraising. Uh, once again, free e-waste recycling. It'll take place April 12th, 2025. Um, that's a Saturday, FYI. And it'll take place 8 AM to noon. There's a list of various electrical appliances that are not good for recycling. On the left side, you can see appliances you are able to recycle. Thank you. Oh. Where's the location? I'm sorry, it wasn't made where it is. Um, this is going to take place at the parking lot of Pearl Harbor Elementary.
Are we done in this corner? Mr. O'Moore?
Okay, I also have a question. Are you guys, is the state, the one operating those speeding and whatever the lights, blinking lights where?
I believe that's.
Or is it the city? Is it where?
That's, uh, DOT Highways Division.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you, I know you don't have it tonight, but can you give us a slight report next month of, uh, what's happening? Like, I, I'm hearing like they're catching thousands upon thousands, so I was just curious if you can give a report of that next month. Thanks.
Yeah, mahalo, uh, Board Member O'Moore. So previously to this, I also attended the IAA Neighborhood Board meeting. They did have a representative there for, from DOT. I don't wanna speak for them. I do know that because the citations were so high and there were so many in the queue, they've adjusted the speed limit instead of five miles per hour. It's 11 miles per hour over the limit. And that was sometime in March, I think it was adjusted, but don't quote me on that. That's just. For DOT highways. Okay. Sure.
Can you use a microphone, Mr. O'Moore? We can't hear nothing on this end.
Sorry.
Mahalo.
Audience, any questions for Representative Ichiyama's office? Mr. Yiggy, you can take the microphone here.
Question, but a compliment.
Hold on Dennis, they're not, they're not gonna hear you.
Oh, I need a microphone? Okay, you could be a chief petty officer in the United States Navy. I didn't need a microphone.
Oh, okay, somebody listening and, but, uh, I'd like to thank Representative Ichiyama for calling on the governor to fly the POW MIA flag like they do at the.
MIA flag like they do at the post office. For us, directly beneath the Stars and Stripes at the state capitol. I don't know how many in this room know this, but the last I heard, in Hawaii, per capita, our military and veterans community is the largest in the nation. And what I would ask people who are aware of this now to please contact the governor by email and ask him to reconsider and start flying as frequently as they do at the post office. There's a minimum of about three or four or five days that the government says, well, if you want to be, at least let him know and let us know that we're aware of our standing as far as military and veterans communities in the nation. And let him know, and then maybe we won't need any legislation. It'll just become part of the governor's, that he sends somebody out when they raise the Stars and Stripes. The POW MIA flag goes up, and if it's got a light on it, the Stars and Stripes are up 24/7. And I think that would be the least we could do for any POW MIA's that are out there not remembered officially by this state, where the community is the largest. Thank you.
Any other questions for Representative Ichiyama's office?
Chair, may I respond really quickly?
Sure.
Mahalo for that. Just an FYI, unfortunately, that resolution did not receive any testimony. I was tracking it on behalf of some constituents, but it will come back around next year. If this is something you feel very strongly about, please submit testimony next legislative session. Yeah, mahalo. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Representative Shimizu, office? Let's move on to presentations. We have the City and County of Honolulu Department of Environmental Services regarding sewer fee increases.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the time tonight. My name is Dan Brick from the Department of Environmental Services. So we handle cities' refuse and wastewater, but I'm here tonight to talk about proposed adjustments to the sewer fee. So a little bit about environmental services. We treat 100 million gallons approximately of wastewater every single day. We have nine wastewater treatment plants and 72 wastewater pump stations and over 2,100 miles of sewer line. And our facilities are operating, pumping, conveying, and treating wastewater 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Never stops. So, you know, as such, periodically, ENV needs to make adjustments to its sewer rates. So as far as why are fees going up? Well, between 2025 and 2040, we have $10.1 billion in improvement projects that we are making to our, to our systems. The largest of those projects, coming from the 2010 consent decree, is the Sand Island Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrade to secondary treatment. So that project is currently in design and will go out to bid soon, and it is required to be completed by 2035. And the cost of that project is going to be approximately $1.8 billion. You know, there's many other projects that are going on. You know, we're worried about climate change, sea level rise, so we're always making improvements to our infrastructure. So increasing fees will help us continue to provide safe and reliable sewer service. We'll finish up this major 2010 consent decree, and this Sand Island Secondary Project will actually close that consent decree out, completed. We'll be replacing aging infrastructure. We'll provide additional infrastructure, and we're going to upgrade and modernize our treatment plants and pump stations, implement energy-saving technology. But as far as the fee structure, we're, we're going to change how sewer fees are applied. Right now, currently, 70% of the sewer fee is fixed, and 30% is based on how much volume of water you use. And what we're proposing is to adjust that to a 50% fixed fee, 50% volumetric. And essentially, that'll, that will give you more control over your wastewater bill. Using less water will have a greater effect on reducing your bill. So that, that change in volumetric fee from 70/30 to 50/50 would occur over four years. So you may be asking, how much will your, your bill go up? What are we proposing? So we're proposing a, a 10-year plan, which coincides with the completion of, of the 2010 consent decree, which will bring us to 2035. And we're looking at fees of 9% a year for the first six years, so 9% annual, and then 8%, 7%, 6%, and 5%. So the average, the mean household uses about 6,000 gallons of water per month. That means 50% of households use less than that, 50% use more than that. So currently, you know, as, at the mean rate, your bill is a total of $99.77. With the 9% increase, you're, you're looking at about an increase of about $8 a month. It'll bring you to about $107.31. And that, that continues throughout the course of, of the next 10 years, based on, on the percentage. And, and we understand that that's, that is a, you know, an impactful increase, and we, we are setting up an assistance plan for, for low-income residents. So we're committed to funding $10 million a year to a, an assistance plan called the Customer Assistance for Residential Environmental Services. It's called the CARES Act. And sewer customers will qualify based on household incomes of less than 80% area median income, and we'll, we'll be providing a $20 to $25 credit for that. So with that, I open it up to any questions anyone may have.
Board, any question regarding sewer fees? Mr. Omora?
Yes.
I got a ton of questions here.
Okay.
I'm glad that you're here, because it's the first time since I've been on the board that, you know, someone of your stature and your area is here. There's questions like, I understand about the costs and so forth. That's understandable, so I think we just got to suck it and, you know, do what we can. But the questions I had is real basic. Like, what do you mean by the primary treatment center, the secondary treatment center? You know, if you can explain that, because I think a lot of us here have no clue how the sewer system, or how this system works to begin with, you know?
Sure.
And I think people that'll watch the thing later, you know, and when it comes out on Olelo, might get a better understanding. And I think if we understand all that work that goes in, that I think people appreciate why they have to pay a little bit more, and it's more understandable, I think. So if you can explain that, the primary, secondary treatments, where are they located around the islands, and where do they discharge in the end?
Sure, absolutely. So when we say primary or secondary treatment, it's, it's a level of, of treatments. So our treatment plants, our large ones, work under an NPDES permit to discharge wastewater into the ocean, treated effluents. So it's treated. And per the consent decree that, that came up in 2010, our treatment plants had to be upgraded to secondary treatment, which is a whole nother layer of treatments. It's, it's a higher level of effluent quality that we'd be discharging. So the Hona Uli Uli plant recently completed its secondary upgrade, so, so that it was partial secondary, but now it's completely secondary. You know, our other treatment plants, such as Kailua Treatment Plant, it is already secondary treatments, but it's, it's a higher quality. You, you have, can discharge less suspended solids. You know, you're, you're on, on a higher standard, and, and to get there, it's a whole nother train of equipment. For, for Sand Island, that treatment plant treats about 55 million gallons of wastewater a day. Yeah, and so there's a primary treatment system at that plant, but to treat that, that average of 55 million gallons a day, we have to build a lot more facilities to, to handle that. And, and realize that that's an average. When we get heavy storms and, and high-flow conditions, I mean, that plant can, can go up to 240 million gallons a day. So these, these facilities have to be able to, to handle that. And I, I should mention that, you know, we have not had a sewer fee increase since 2016. So we were able to hold our rates very steady for a long time. You know, we had COVID, and we didn't want to do any increases through, through those events. But we're, we're at a point where these major projects need to get done and, and need to be funded, and our sewer funds need, need these increases to accommodate the completion of those projects.
Audience, any questions regarding sewer fees? Sir, can you come up to the microphone?
Just had a question, because I was curious. Does all the wastewater treatment plants have UV treatment as well, or is that part of the upgrade?
Sure. All of our treatment plants do not currently have UV. We are looking into UV at Hona Uli Uli. We're, we're going to get UV out there. Kailua is going to have a UV project that's actually going to be completed at, at the end of the year. Sand Island has had a UV system for a long time. It really depends on, on, you know, how the effluent quality, how the systems treat. If, if bacteria in our effluents is, is high, I mean, UV is a form of, of disinfection. So it's, it's something that as time goes on, yes, we're adding UV at more and more of our plants.
Good question, Chuck. Any other questions regarding sewer fees? Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Moving on to our second presentation, we have Asset School regarding a Phase II project, G70.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, Board members. Aloha, audience members. My name is Ryan Ringette. I'm a planner at G70, here with my colleague Lance, who's an architect at G70, and we also have Sunjolina, who is the K-38 principal at Asset School. So we're here today to talk about the Asset School Phase II project. It's an existing school located about three blocks west of here, and in Wanalua, along Ohana Nui Way, near Main Street and Paint Circle. It's a three-and-a-half-acre site, and it's adjacent to military family housing, churches. Okay, I will try not to turn my head. Thank you.
You have questions from the board on that end? I can't, we can't hear what's going on.
I appreciate that. Yeah, some churches, other schools, business, park, and fire. So it's located in State Urban District, along with the surrounding area. It has City R5 residential zoning to the north, east, and west. South is F1 Federal Military Preservation District zoning. And like I said, it's an existing school. It's been there since the 90s, the early 90s. They already have a conditional use permit, and now we're coming in to do a modification to that, and yeah, talk to you about what that modification looks like. So I'll turn that over to Lance to discuss more.
Evening, Board and community members. Thanks for your time. Just a little more context, as Ryan was sharing, where Asset School is in relation to the airport and Pearl Harbor, a little bit off the screen right there. On the next slide, we'll further into the adjacent buildings around the project site as Ryan was sharing, just across the way here, past the baseball complex, next to Trinity Mission Baptist Church. Of note, since 2015, Asset School has reduced their student enrollment to currently about 124 students today. And with that, the site circulation on this next slide shows no plans to change how parents pick up and drop off their kids. The, the two blue routes there, as you see, are ways to arrive to campus, where the main gate is on that bottom, lower right corner, and egress out, the departure route, is noted in the, the yellow arrow. So here is the proposed master plan for the K8 campus. For further context, in Phase 1, on the next slide shows the K4 Village was completed back in 2018. And the school now has plans for the Phase II work to take place there in the Magenta this coming year. It consists of specialty existing program, like a library, music, a maker space, and performing and visual arts. So looking to improve and build new spaces for the K8 campus. And again, that's part of the larger master plan update. And really, next steps is, you know, working towards the entitlement, the CUP update, and we hope to, if all goes plan, we hope to work towards a permit and set and get going on construction, hopefully sometime next year. But we then open up to any questions.
Board, any questions regarding this project? Mr. Omora?
Okay, I'm not knowledgeable about this kind of thing. So what is the classification of this school? Like, like, you know, you have your public schools, your private schools, and yours is, is not either/or. So what kind of categories? Is it a private school?
Yes.
Oh, okay. See, yeah.
Yeah, in response, it is a private, a private school.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions, Board? Audience, any questions regarding Asset School? Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Moving on to Board action on our agenda. We have a three-absent letter. I'm going to defer that to the next meeting. Move on to a resolution that be introduced by myself to this Board. And I was online and researching some stuff online. And I learned that across the United States, they have this seniors workout station. It's just all over America is popping up, where they have a designated area for seniors to work out in a public park. In Hawaii, we don't have one as of yet. I think it would be a good idea to see if we can do that. And I'll read the resolution. And on this resolution, we're also requesting that if we could get a playground for the children. And both of these projects would be at the Howard Shima Lekini Street Mini Park. And I'll go into the resolution now. Resolution regarding public parks activity for Keke and Kupuna, recommending the city and county of Honolulu install playground equipment for our Keke and exercise equipment for our Kupuna at the Howard Shima Lekini Street Mini Park, located at 5375 Lekini Street in Salt Lake. Whereas, the city and county of Honolulu should find creative ways to promote a healthier lifestyle in Oahu for our people, young and old. Whereas, by keeping our citizens healthy, medical costs are lowered, and taxpayer monies are saved. Whereas, the Salt Lake community in Oahu is home to over 10,000 residents aged 55 and over. Whereas, six public elementary schools and three private preschools are located in a two-mile radius of Salt Lake, leaving thousands of our young children living in and around the Salt Lake community. Whereas, Neighborhood Board 18 remains committed to nurturing our Keke and keeping our Kupuna healthy, so they can live and play in our community. Whereas, it is estimated that over 45,000 persons live in and around Salt Lake. Whereas, this Neighborhood Board 18 requests that the city and county of Honolulu install a modernized workout exercise stations for our Kupuna at the east end of the Howard Shima Lekini Street Mini Park. Whereas, this trend of providing workout stations for the elderly at public parks has recently swept America by storm. Focusing on stretching, balancing, and building muscle for our seniors will prevent long-term injury or death. Whereas, we believe this would be the first strictly senior-designed workout stations at a public park in the state of Hawaii, if implemented. Whereas, having a senior workout station at the park will help the elderly with isolation as well, because most live alone, and this would be a great way to meet other Kupuna. Whereas, the community would benefit by having seniors live longer as a result of them exercising, getting out of the house, and meeting people. Whereas, the Salt Lake modernized workout exercise stations for seniors could be a test case for Hawaii. If usage is high, other such stations could erect around the state. Whereas, this Neighborhood Board 18 also requests that a children's playground be installed as well at the Howard Shima Lekini Street Mini Park, in the same area as the senior workout stations. Whereas, the closest children's playground is at the Ho'ala Neighborhood Park, located at 5080 Ala Luki Street. Be resolved that the Leamano-Salt Lake Fossil Village Airport Neighborhood Board 18 respectfully requests that the mayor of the city and county of Honolulu, along with the director of the Parks and Recreation Department, along with the city council, entertain the feasibility of having a children's playground, along with modernized workout exercise stations for seniors at the Howard Shima Lekini Street Mini Park. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the mayor of the city and county of Honolulu, the managing director of the city and county of Honolulu, the directors of the city and county departments of Parks and Recreation, Designing, Construction, Planning, and Permitting, along with councilmen Radio Cordero and our council members of the city council. With the resolution being read, we're going to be opening up to discussion. I just want to pass out, I did earlier, if any of the board members want to see the... There's some pictures of this seniors workout stations. And it's pretty much like a children's playground, where they have that rubberized mat and with all these different exercise stations. And like I said, it's very popular on the mainland, and I think would be a good fit for the Salt Lake community. Basically, I'm going to open up to questions from the Board. Let's start with the senior workout stations. Any comments from the Board that they want to add? Ms. Heine?
Now, I'd like to cough. Can I put the motion forward?
Sure. Just at the end, we're going to discuss first, and then we're going to cover the...
It sounds like a really great plan. I love it. I'll vote for it. But there's only one slight question I have in my mind, and that's the, you know, old folks are very frail and fragile. And unlike kids, right, that are running around the park, they fall down, they get right back up, because kids are very resilient. Unfortunately, us older guys, like, I'm getting knee problems now, and, you know, I get a hard time bending over. And so my question is, what about liabilities and stuff of that nature? If they fall down, they get hurt. You know what I mean? As compared to kids.
What happens if you fall?
I get hurt.
Well, the liability, of course, there's going to be a liability in anything you do. But this will help the seniors build muscle, get more coordinated. And of course, like I said, like, anything you do in life, there's always a liability. So of course, if they get hurt over there, I'm sure the city, they can pretty much keep have the city liable, depending on what happens and the situation. So it's a situational basis, depending what had happened. Any other comments? Ms. Connie Morrow?
Well, as far as a discussion on this, I'm all for it, because I myself am a coordinator of a good neighbor program at my condo, which we have over 942 units. And this is the Country Club Village. And what I've done there is to develop a program called Kupuna Connect, which is, you know, for anyone who's interested, actually, but, you know, 55 and over. And AARP really does support this type of community park or recreation centers. You know, since we can't build a building, you know, this is a great way to get started with an exercise station. I'm all for it.
Okay, Board, another discussion we're going to get into is for having a children's playground at the same location. Any comments from the Board or anything they want to add regarding a children's playground? Mr. Omar, you want to discuss liability for the children? Oh, okay. Ms. Godfrey?
I like the idea of the accessibility, because lots of times, the kids are running on the street, right? So if there's a park, it's someplace easy for the parents to take them in for a little while. I like the idea.
Ms. Heine, you can make your motion at this time, as far as this resolution is concerned. Thank you.
Chair, if you would, I'd just like to also commend you for your guys' foresight in creating this resolution and putting this motion forward. It's very progressive, very active, proactive for our community. So mahalo. And on that note, I'd like to put a motion forward to, I'd like to move to accept the resolution as stated by the Chair. Yeah.
This is Chandra. I will second the motion.
We have a vote at this time. Any objections regarding to moving forward with this resolution? Hearing none, the resolution will be passed. I just want to thank Doug Fujikura. He was the one that pushed the children's playgrounds. So I don't have all the credit, but he pushed that we should have a children's playground there. And I kind of added to that with this senior workout station. So hopefully, the city can take it into account, and maybe we can see this be implemented in the near future. Let's move on to the approval of minutes, approval of the March 13 regular meeting Is there any changes, corrections need to be made for last month's meeting minutes?
I'm going to make a motion to move to accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
We hear a second from Secretary Connie Morrow. The minutes will be submitted as documented. Okay, we're kind of getting towards the end of our meeting. Announcements, the next Leamano-Salt Lake Fossil Village Airport Neighborhood Board will be on May 8th, the same time, 6:30, at the same venue. Of course, our meetings are videotaped on Olelo, Channel 49, about four times a month. City and County of Honolulu and Hawaii Food Bank are partnering to fight against hunger. Neighbor Assistant will be collecting any perishable goods at tonight's meeting. I know Mr. Omar brought a can of Spam, is that true? Or two cans of Spam? Awesome. And I think, is he qualified for that $5 McDonald's gift certificate? No? Okay. Okay, Board, before we close, any other comments need to be made before we end this meeting? Ms. Heine?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of you. I know some of you stayed, even though you guys had presented earlier. Mahalo for staying to the end of our meeting. And again, Board members, thank you for your time and commitment. And we did good work tonight. We got through a lot in, you know, a short time in the resolutions. I'm very excited about the resolution that you put forward tonight. So mahalo. This format, the format, I think, was really good. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good move, Chair.
And got to give Aloha Stadium, the Navy, and the Army, and the Board of Water Supply, they always, every meeting, they patiently wait till two hours later to give their report. So kind of want to throw that in the mix and give them an opportunity. But look, they're such diehards, they're still here. It was a chance to escape early in the meeting, but thank you for being here. And Ms. Heine?
Chair.
Ms. Heine, can you second a motion for Mr. Omar to speak? Go ahead, Mr. Omar.
Okay, I guess this is for, I'm chairing the community, I guess, on the rail. So I just wanted to make a quick announcement that the second phase of the rail is hopefully going to be opening sometime in the latter part of this year. They're hoping for October. Keep your fingers crossed. And then it'll be running now all the way to Middle Street. So keep your hands, I mean, your fingers crossed. And I think, I ride the rail, that's why, too, quite often, and I love it. We need more people to ride it, and I think as it expands further, more and more people will ride it. That's it.
I thank all of you for attending. Time is 8:15 PM. This meeting is adjourned.